I would like to move that we consider these four amendments as a consent agenda. I believe we need unanimous consent on that. And then we can go to the public and then we can actually have a vote on the consent agenda, which just needs a majority, I understand.
Right, right. Mr. Lucas, does she have that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, so we need a unanimous vote to allow this to be considered together. Will the clerk please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Just to clarify, it's the motion to consider the items on the consent agenda as one item.
Sorry.
On collectively.
That's what I meant. My apology, yes. Will the clerk please call the role of the motion to consider these items as one agenda, one item?
Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Sorry, yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been approved. And now we go to the public for comment on amendments one through four, which are being considered together. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to amendments one through four to ordinance 2012? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas will recognize you. First call for comments. Second call for comments. Please raise your hand or type into the Zoom chat. Last call. We're back to the council for debate on the consent agenda. Are there any comments on amendments one through four? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote on amendments one through four collectively. Will the clerk please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes. And so that those amendments are adopted eight zero. I'm going to pass the gavel now to Vice President Sims so that I may move amendment five. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, this amendment is a complicated history, but basically this amendment does two things. It creates a parking benefit district in Garden Hill. And then it creates a set of permits that can be sold to people who used to not be eligible to buy a permit in a neighborhood zone. Let me explain. So the ordinance eighteen eleven created the first zone in town that is enforced at night on weekends, zone six, which is the Garden Hill neighborhood. And it was quite successful. Ninety-seven permits were sold last year, but there are two hundred and thirty-seven some spaces in the neighborhood as according to account from planning and transportation. And I had requests from many constituents who said, the street is empty, why can't I park there? Or why can't my visitor park there? It's a pretty restrictive zone that's there. But the neighborhood was extremely satisfied with the new zone six restrictions. And but they acknowledged that, you know, this the street is not being used all the time. And where we had a lot of parking that was always available. To that end, I have made an effort to try to open up parking to people who do not live in single-family detached housing, while trying to be sensitive about limiting how much, how many permits can be sold. The amendment that was proposed, the Transportation Committee proposed tiers of pricing, namely the first hundred and fifty would be sold at the regular rate. But the penultimate fifty would be sold at a higher rate, and the final fifty would be sold at an even higher rate. Because we have no sense of what the actual market is for the parking in this zone. After extensive conversation with Michelle Wall, who is the Parking Services Director, there is a significant technical hangup that would prevent that from being implemented anytime soon. Namely, it has to be programmed into the backend interface that's managed by a contractor named T2. And their scope of work changes take months to implement. But in a prior conversation with an earlier draft of this amendment, which I presented at the Parking Commission, she did say, I mean, the initial idea was to charge a different price for people who living, who are who live in the zone but are not eligible. And that technically can be done. But members of the Parking Commission turned that down because it was inequitable. Why should single-family residents, whether they're renters or owners, pay forty-six dollars, but people in multifamily dwellings pay significantly higher price? So again, it's been amended. And the amendment now simply calls for a temporary program from September fifteenth to February of next year. There will be a hundred additional permits available at a higher price, that price being double the cost of a typical all-zone permit in the neighborhood zones, or two hundred and twelve dollars. I'll explain the significance of the price in a minute. But any dollar above the first forty-six dollars, which is we, the Parking Commission determined a few years ago, was roughly the cost of maintenance of the Neighborhood Zone Program, as you can see in the 2016 Parking Commission Report, would go into a special fund that would benefit the zone where the permits were sold, specifically to improve public works in that zone, to repair sidewalks, to build new sidewalks, to build lighting, to bury power cables, whatever public works and the neighborhood saw fit to improve. So every dollar above forty-six would go into this fund. It would be basically like a TIF district only for parking. The money wouldn't leave the zone. And this is the only condition under which the Neighborhood Association would accept, you know, such an opening of the program to people who are heretofore not eligible for permits. I also believe that there's a huge demand in the zone for paid street parking. And that if we were to open the zone up at forty-six dollars, it would sell out quickly. And, you know, it would not teach us anything, nor would it demonstrate the idly the market demand. So the important thing to note about this amendment, as it's been modified, it's been revised, is that it's an experiment. It sunsets at the end of February. The most people who have been accustomed to buying permits in the zone, I've been reminded by Ms. Wall, have been able to start buying permits since July fifteenth. That's when the next year's permits go on sale. So I expect that, although I don't know if they have a figure tonight, I don't expect there to be more than ninety-seven residential permits, give or take a few, plus approximately twenty-five visitor permits, give or take a few, which the hostels bought last year. So about half the capacity of the zone was purchased. So this hundred permits doesn't max the capacity of the zone. It comes close without going over. But it does offer us insight into the sheer demand for parking in this area. The price has been set, the price that I'm recommending is still lower than the cost of private parking in the zone. And I have some evidence from people who live or have lived in the zone to support that. For them, who cannot buy parking on the street for any price, I've never been able to, as long as this program has been in effect thirty years, will at least be able to buy parking. And it is less expensive than any private parking that they would be able to buy in zone six. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions about it. But before I do that, I'd like to invite staff to comment on the updated, the revised amendment, especially if Ms. Wall is present. Thanks, Mr. Sims.
Okay, I think we're waiting for additions from Ms. Wall or staff. So do we have anyone? Is Ms. Wall present?
Yes, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Volin, we talked at the, we talked about this at great length. As the concern rose, as he spoke about with the my my vendor and the capacity of the scope of work that would take for the tiered program, it was changed back to the original two-twelve pricing that was before. There's a few other restrictions, the hundred, the hundred permits. And the other one is if they are ineligible, they will not be able to buy a visitor pass. They will be able to buy buy a visitor temporary pass that is within the last ordinance that we're proposing tonight. So I do believe this, oh, this, this challenges us to see where the market is. At the same time, as I've heard from other constituents and as Councilmember Volin and I have spoke about, the pricing could be, could be a concern for many. So I support the concept of this program. I do believe it's an important program. But at this point, I am unsure about the pricing. But he does have evidence and proof that in other complexes, the parking is extremely expensive. And we might sell a few of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to respond if I could.
Well, I think we're still looking for other comments. Was, you said someone from staff. Was that our staff you're talking about?
Yeah, from from the city staff, administration staff.
Do we have anyone here? Or is that from?
Well, that was Ms. Ms. Wall just spoke.
Okay, was that it? Okay, okay, if that was it.
I think so.
Ms. Parliamentarian, is it okay for Steve to, I'm sorry, the petitioner to respond to this now, or do we go to? Well, I just want to make sure, Steve. I mean, it's not funny. I'm trying to do the right thing here.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, thank you. Please respond, Mr. Volin.
Thank you. Just brief response. Yeah, I wanted to, I appreciate that Ms. Wall emphasized that even though any resident of zone six would be eligible to buy one of these addition, a hundred additional permits, that does not allow them to buy an annual visitor permit. But this ordinance also proposes a new temporary visitor permit program. You can buy a permit for a day, a week, or two weeks, and anyone can buy those permits, and they're also premium priced. But at least, but before, in the past year, there was no way for anyone to buy anything other than an annual visitor permit. So again, we don't want the streets to be empty any more than we want them to be over full. And this takes a step to remedy it. Secondly, she said something else that I wanted to, but I've already forgotten it. So if the question comes up, I'll answer it. Thank you for the chance to respond.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Scamblerie?
Thank you. I don't know if this is Councilmember Volin or Ms. Wall. Can you summarize the visitor, the temporary visitor pass prices? You said it was a day, a week, or two weeks?
Yes, this is.
I can do it. Okay, go ahead.
The proposal is one day is eleven dollars, one week is fifty-five, and two weeks is a hundred and ten. The program, what we heard from Garden Hill residents at the beginning is all this, you know, the the streets are vacant. I can't even have a visitor here. I heard that from multiple zone resident working individuals. And so I asked the staff, since I am practically new, and I was like, what do they do? And they said they have to be qualified to get a permit. This is a way for them to have visitors on a temporary basis, whether it's mom and dad, whether it's siblings, whether it's friends. Right now, a tenant or a resident can only get one visitor annual pass per resident. So let's say you have four people in the house that have neighborhood residential permits. They can only share one visitor permit, pretty much. So there's no other opportunity if one, if that visitor permit is used for the other three residents to have visitors. So this was a great concern to me. And when I looked into it, that's what brought up the proposal of the visitor temporary permit. Yes, it is at a higher rate, but it's at a higher rate, so we will not get the abuse of it. It's a temporary, temporary permit program. So we'll see the usage and we'll track the usage. And I can bring it back to council next year to let you know how, how positive, successful it is. With COVID, it might be a little bit different this year.
Thank you. Did that answer what you wanted, Councilmember Scamblerie?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Could you summarize, Councilmember Volin, the three, the three price tiers you have for a zone permit?
Well, I, that is not a revised amendment. I did originally have forty-six dollars for the first hundred and fifty in that zone. And then the cost of an all-zone permit, a hundred and six dollars for the penultimate fifty, and then two hundred and twelve dollars for the final fifty. But again, technically, we can't do three tiers. We can, however, do a program where anybody who's not eligible for a forty-six dollar permit, but has an address in zone six, can simply get a permit at a different price. And that price is double the cost of an all-zone permit, so that it will increase year by year. On the other hand, because this is a, an experimental program, it is set to sunset in February. So it doesn't really need to be pegged to that. But that is consistent with, I mean, the market for private parking off-street in this area reaches as high as that much per month, and this is a cost per year.
And so that's the two-twelve figure that you're speaking about?
Correct.
So, so residents who ordinarily buy are charged, I think you said forty-six. Other residents who would not normally be entitled, but who live in zone six would get charged two-twelve?
Yes, but if, if all the forty-six dollar permits, if, if, I mean, there is no current cap on how many permits can be sold in a zone. We do know how many, roughly how many spots there are to park. And I think that the Parking Services Director has the ability to, you know, decide whether or not to fulfill an application for a permit. But if the, for some reason, the zone sells out, forty-six dollar permits, then, you know, these wouldn't be available. But I think it's up to the Parking Services Director to, to to stop selling permits if she believes the zone is full. But there's no actual ordinance that, that currently caps that. An earlier draft of this amendment actually did cap the amount of permits that could be sold. But that's no longer in the revised amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Volin, you mentioned that the Parking Commission rejected, at least in part, I think it was a three-three vote or something, that the Parking Commission rejected your initial proposal because the pricing wasn't equitable. That is, if you lived in a single-family detached home, you paid forty-six. If you lived in a multifamily unit, you paid a much more expensive price. So you had revised the proposal, which went to Transportation Committee, but now in revising it again, we're back to a system where if you live in a multifamily dwelling, you pay four times, more than four times the amount of somebody who lives in a single detached dwelling, which is like, I think there are major problems with the residential parking program for equity reasons. And, and to me, this is, I understand that that people are wholly ineligible right now. And, you know, could now, under your proposal, come in at two hundred and twelve. But it's, it's still inequitable because they're paying over four times as much. Why not put it to forty-six for this program? This experimental program, still cap it. And I think, you know, there's in any, so my question basically has to do with estimating market demand, which I think is part of your goal here. If the two hundred and twelve, you know, we sell thirty of them, all that tells you is that you, that there, you know, is demand among people dwelling in multifamily units for about thirty permits at two hundred and twelve. It doesn't really tell you how to fix the program for next year or where to set the price, if we're, if that's what we're interested in doing. Whereas if you set it at forty-six and we sell out, and then there's another eighty people that ask for them, and we don't sell them to them, you know, do it on a first-come, first-served basis, then you've demonstrated that at least a hundred and eighty people, in it, in addition to the, you know, people who used to be eligible, now want to buy in at forty-six dollars. And you can, you know, using some rough estimates of elasticity of parking or something, you can at least try to estimate, you know, if the price should be higher, if we're going to open it up to more people, to be more equitable. So I guess my preference would be to not make an inequitable system now to prove market demand, rather to keep the system equitable, open it to more people, cap it, and let the requests for permit illustrate that market demand rather than, than a differential pricing. And sorry, that was a lot of explanation, but my question is essentially, would you consider that instead?
Okay, that's a very good question, and perhaps the crux of the matter. My short answer is no. I would not consider that for several reasons. Number one, I know the demand is enormous here. But this is a way of experimenting, number one. Number two, the Neighborhood Association would not endorse opening up the program for any reason. To simply, it would be more unprecedented to simply allow non-single-family dwellers to buy permits. It would be a fundamental change in the program that I don't think we're prepared for tonight. And I don't think would fly, certainly not into this timeline. I also don't think that this neighborhood in particular will welcome, you know, full streets for no reason that appears to them. There, there is definitely a privilege that people living in neighborhood zones feel about this price. They complained about the price going up from twenty-five to forty-five in 2019. It was the first time we had raised the neighborhood zone price in twenty-five years. So most of people who park and who live in core neighborhoods that have these zones are long accustomed to this low subsidized price. So what I will say is, this amendment is not inequitable, per se. The Neighborhood Parking Zone Program as a whole has always been inequitable in that way. This amendment makes it less inequitable. It's not perfect. And in fact, I fully acknowledge that it's, it, in theory, it does not seem fair. In practice, this price is substantially less than what multifamily dwellers are accustomed to paying for off-street parking in this area. And my hunch is that all one hundred permits will sell out. And if they do, that's a sign that, that's a sign to the entire city, including people living in the other zones that are accustomed to that grossly subsidized forty-six dollar amount that we have to change the way we think about residential parking, and that one size doesn't fit all. The price of each zone should be set to match the demand. There's going to be more demand in the zone closest to campus than there is in the near west side. So because permit prices can really only be changed once a year, if we don't do this now, it's going to take a year to find out what the actual, it could take years to find out what the actual price should be. And I would say that by setting it at two-twelve, if permits aren't selling, we can always run another ordinance in October and November to cut the price. But trying to raise the price, you know, is not going to show us what the demand is. So it's an unusual program. That's why it has a sunset. It's meant to be a data point to show us, you know, what is, but it's really meant to show neighborhood zone parkers just how inexpensive the parking they've been getting is, and how much demand there is for that parking.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You good, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the City Council, first round? Okay, I saw your hands, Councilmember Scamblerie, but I have a question here before we move forward. Councilmember Volin, the first thing I want to say is that I'm not real comfortable with the outcome at the Parking Commission on this discussion. There was pushback, and then it, in essence, the next time failed on the three, the three vote. So it sounds like this amendment that you're bringing tonight is it, it doesn't, it's, it's trying to change something that's in existence or not in existence. And I think this would be better suited with an ordinance as opposed to an amendment. Because I think it's creating something that doesn't exist, and that's what ordinances do, is my understanding. But my question in all of this is another comment. I'd also like to have a TIF in my own neighborhood, too. In essence, that's kind of what we're doing. I think each and every one of us would like to have our very own TIF to serve public works for our own little pet projects. But secondly, my question is, why not citywide? If this is, this amendment is going to solve some of those issues, why not citywide? As opposed to just the Garden Hill District?
First, let me say that I don't think that it has to be an ordinance. I think that this, a separate ordinance, it's perfectly appropriate here. I simply disagree with that assessment. We've made much bigger changes via amendments, you know, to city code. But with respect to why not citywide, that's a excellent question. Keep in mind, first of all, that zone six is the first neighborhood zone to have enforcement at night and on weekends. This is, this was already an unusual zone, but it was what, it was the, the case that Garden Hill needed. That's the way that their streets are used, at night and on weekends. And they wanted to have some more control over how that's used. And well, they got it. And the pressure to park in this neighborhood is unusual, as well as high. And they also expressed a willingness to experiment, you know, they, but I, I think that you're, you're seeing the reason why they're willing is because they know that the money that, you know, even if they had to pay the higher rate, at least they know that the money is coming back to, to the area where it was generated. This is a, you know, stock Donald Choup. I can talk about sort of the logic behind how parking benefit districts work. But I also don't think that any of us should be trying to change wholesale the, the neighborhood zone system without, you know, some evidence. We, you know, Mr. Flaherty and I, like, actually, several parking commissioners and several councilmembers and just talking about the idea of spitballing it, have said, look, there's an inherent inequality here. And your amendment doesn't, doesn't eliminate it. And I had to balance it. That was the case, and I hadn't thought about it that way. I just thought, here are people who can't buy parking at all, and at least we can give them parking, but we shouldn't give it to them for the subsidized price. We should give it to them for the market price. So the subsidy is what has to change. But you all can tell me how enthusiastic other neighborhoods are going to be about suddenly paying what the market will bear for parking in their own neighborhood. That's not what they're accustomed to. And as correct as policy as that is, it's not going to change easily or quickly. This is a way of getting everyone to be on board. If they know that the money is staying in their zone, they're much more inclined to support it.
Thank you. Before we go into Dublin, I have another question, if I may. It appears, I'm hearing some, some legality issues. In your research or your estimation, and maybe we need staff or maybe city legal, but in, in your mind, is this legal, as simple, is this legal? Have you, have you talked about the legality of this?
I'm sorry, I, I'm proposing an amendment. How is it? I don't even understand the question.
Okay, I'll go to our council staff. Mr. Lucas, has there been any discussion on legalities of this amendment?
Well, I'm not quite sure what, what you're asking.
I'll point blank, is this legal?
Do you mean procedurally or the?
The results, the possible results. If we were to pass this tonight, would, is there any liability, or would we have to withstand a challenge of any type, do you think?
So I, I have received comments from a member of the public that has questioned whether the amendment is germane to the ordinance. I don't know if that's what you're referring to. If so, council should be aware, there, there is a requirement in our local code that amendments be germane to the, to the proposition being considered. Robert's Rules of Order kind of elaborate on what, what is and isn't germane. If there's a question of whether this amendment is germane to the, to the ordinance being considered, the chair can make a determination or can ask that the council as a whole vote to determine if the amendment is germane. So if that's the concern you're referring to, that's my response. I do believe we've got Barbara McKinney here as well, who may be able to comment on the legality of the actual content of the amendment. As far as I know, staff hasn't expressed any concerns, but she may be able to, to chime in with additional information if she'd like to.
Okay, that's an answer, and if she cares to chime in, we'll listen. Okay, and if not, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith, being a parliamentarian, do we go for a second round of council questions before public comment?
Normally, yes.
Normally, yes, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Scamblerie, I think you have other questions.
I did, thank you. So there's currently a proposed road closure in Lower Cascades Park, and we are discussing among neighborhoods, and we're gathering feedback from residents about whether or not they'd like that to continue. One of the key points of that discussion that's come up, though, is whether or not this is a year that gives us good data. I would hate to see us try this program, get to a year from now and decide, well, it was a COVID year, so we really didn't learn what we thought we learned. Is now, I appreciate what you're saying, this is a test, and it's a way to gather data. Is this a year to do that? Are we going to get good, reliable data in a year when COVID has changed the student population and changed people's travel and work patterns so much? Does it make sense?
That's it? Yeah, it's a good question. So the dilemma that I've been trying to solve all along has been that only half the capacity of the zone was sold, and the streets have been largely empty because of the significantly longer hours of enforcement. And I had constituents, people living in the zone, writing me and saying, I can't have somebody visit me, my mom can't visit me, my girlfriend can't visit me, I, I live in this apartment building, and the street is empty, like, why? And, you know, good parking theory says that 85 to 90% of parking should be in use at any given time. If more than that's in use, you're not charging enough. But if less than that's in use, you're charging too much. Well, we weren't so much charging too much as preventing it altogether. It was only available to single-family dwellings, which are not a majority of units in this park, in this neighborhood. So I wanted to have an answer that would at once, you know, satisfy the question, why are these spaces empty, without upending the original goal of Zone 6, which was to enforce parking at nights and on weekends on behalf of the neighborhood. So I, this is a balanced amendment that's gone through many revisions, significant revisions, at Parking Commission and here, through talking with staff, in order to try to achieve that goal. What I don't want to do is have to tell people living in Zone 6, especially in a year where there's not going to be as many people here, that you can't park on the street, because even though it's empty, you can't park on the street for any price. At least this way, we can do it in a controlled way without, you know, without upsetting the original purpose of the zone and the neighborhood that asked for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. I'll tell you the way I've looked at this, having talked with Councilmember Volin about it and thought about it with, listened to everyone. It's, it's a way to, it certainly is a way to experiment and see how this works. And Councilmember Volin is very interested in parking structure, structures and fees, and how it is on, how much it costs to park there, how, you know, subsidies. So it seems like if it's legal, and it's okay with the city departments, they're, they're kind of tentative, but they'll go along with it, too. It seems like it's a great opportunity to try a program. It has a sunset. When is the sunset, Councilor Volin?
February 28.
So it'll last for a few months, and we'll get some data. And it could be, since we really don't know how it's going to come out, and it, and it is a COVID year, right? So we don't know how it's going to come out, but it would seem like it's a great opportunity to try a pilot program. If we get a lot of blowback, I guess we could come back and resend it by ordinance. And what, it seems like it's just a good opportunity to give it a try and, and see how it works. I would think that there are other opportunities in, in our city that we, we have opportunity to try other pilot programs along the way in different fields. And so, you know, I, I think it's kind of a good idea that we give it a try, and, and I, I respect everyone's opinion, so.
Is there a question?
No, there wasn't a question. I just, I was going to ask you when it sunsetted, but beyond that.
If I could respond to it, since we're in questions.
Well, actually, what I was going to say is that I thought you had given me the capital, so, and I didn't think he was done speaking before you asked if he had a question. So are you done, Councilmember Smith?
I am done, thank you, Councilmember.
Please, please respond, Councilmember Volin.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. So I will say that one thing I learned about the data from staff is that approximately three-quarters of neighborhood zone permits are sold in August, and the other quarter is sold in January. So the date of February 28th was chosen because IU has announced that students will be coming back February 1, rough give or take, they're not going to be here for January. So we're going to have a chance to see if there are any permits left in 2021, how many of those sell. I do expect that even in a year like this one, the demand for parking in that area is so great that I'm expecting all 100 permits to sell, even at that price. So, you know, I'm glad that, that you think it's worth trying. I would say, just one, one reaction, one word you said, the idea that somehow it's, is it legal, is, I don't know why this question is being brought up. If it's, if the question is because whether this is germane, our code talks about legislation being germane to the proposition. The proposition is the ordinance as a whole, not to every item or any item within the ordinance. So this is an ordinance about vehicles and traffic, this, this is where parking stuff lives, this is absolutely germane to this ordinance, full stop. So any question about its so-called legality is unprecedented, in my experience in the council. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I may add, as just part of the discussion, so, but thank you for your comments. Any further comments from council members? Seeing none, we'll now go to the public for comments on Amendment Number 5 of Ordinance Please signify by using the chat function, or, I'm sorry, yeah, the function to let us know, or the raise hand function to, so our attorney can, can recognize you.
I believe I.
Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Yeah, I first had a request from Natalia Gavin, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gavin, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. So I reached out to Council President Volin and Councilman, or Councilmember Rosenbarger. I wish, I wish I was present, because we had a really good conversation about this. I became aware of this, just listening to a commission meeting, and I, while I'm a current member of this, or a current resident of District 1, I used to live adjacent to the stadium, in, in that stadium neighborhood. And I, and listening to the commission members was great, hearing them going, you know, back and forth, and then there was a conversation about equity and stuff, but the elephant of the room was towing, right? So when I used to live in that neighborhood, we didn't have that option for temporary permits, which Council President Volin is correct, like, that would have been ideal when you have long-term visitors and stuff like that. So I reached out to some people, some friends, who currently live in that neighborhood, just within the past week, to get their opinion. The majority of them are students, right? So they, I found out that even though many years have elapsed since I used to live in that neighborhood, nothing really has changed in terms of, like, parking accessibility for guests and options, right? So I think when Councilmember Flaherty kind of raised parity and equity within the pricing, that certainly is always, you know, something super important to consider, but that neighborhood is really extraordinary because of the stadium, right? And so towing is, was always such an issue, like, I don't think any of us that actually lived there had any fewer than two to five friends or family members who had been towed, because there were really no reasonable guest kind of solutions in that area. So while I was listening to, like, the other commission members kind of speak about it, I thought, I wonder if they had, and arguing for parity and equity for predominantly students, right? If they had actually reached out to them to ask them what their opinion was, because when I reached out to them just this past week, they argued that, like, well, at least it gives us an option that we're grateful for, because we do have a lot of guests and visitors who unfortunately had been towed before, and we, you know, we just didn't have, we didn't have options. So anyway, just something to consider, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas?
Next up, I believe I saw Randy Paul indicate that he'd like to comment. He should be unmuted and ready to go.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I'm going to look at this in a little different way. This may very well be a good idea. I think it might be a better idea if more time was being spent on it. And my concern is the process, and I have always felt that for good government, process really does matter. And I do think that the legality question that was brought up is a legitimate one, because I don't think that this amendment is germane. And I can't take credit for the work or the research done. Information I'm getting is from a Beacon article that was done this week, it's 5,000 words, it's well researched, I think it makes a very strong argument that this really should stand as an ordinance. And if for no other reason, what I'm seeing tonight is that some of the concerns you've been expressing, you're asking questions and getting answers on the same night you're being asked to vote for this. And I think it's a complicated question. I think it deserves a first reading, I think it deserves the process that most ordinances would get. And I think you're selling yourselves short, that you might be rushing this and passing a piece of bad legislation that you're going to regret later. Also, I'm concerned about the committee structure, the, your own Parking Commission. If I got my information right, on July 9, the pushback was so great that Councilmember Volin withdrew the proposal. On July 23, it was voted down three to three, and then there was a straw vote where one person supported it and two abstained, and straw votes don't really count as far as pushing legislation forward, do you guys? I was actually surprised, I thought this really belonged to the committee as a whole, since it really does impact the entire city. But even if you're going to honor your committee system, your own Parking Commission apparently doesn't, or at least has concerns about this. And it also isn't consistent with the were-as clause, at least a copy that I'm reading states that the Parking Commission recommends this, which clearly they don't. I think, I think what I'm seeing tonight is what happens when the process is cut short, and people try to make, I think, big decisions in one night. I think this deserves a lot more discussion. I would hope that if you haven't read the Beacon article, that you do so, and after you do that, talk to your council about whether this really is germane to what you're doing, because I, I don't think it is. And I think there's no reason why you have to rush this tonight, and why you can't do it the proper way. And again, my, my concern for good government is this is where the public is going to look at you, and, and it's whether you're legitimate or not. And if the public sees you making shortcuts, not for some diabolical reason, if it is, even if it's just for time management, people have more faith in their government, they see their government follow the rules, and I think you're, you're making a mistake tonight if you vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Paul. Mr. Lucas?
We now have Mr. Greg Alexander, who should be ready to comment.
And if I may, just before Mr. Alexander goes, I'll remind everyone else to, you can use the chat feature to raise your hand, or, I'm sorry, use the feature to do your hand raise, or send us a note on chat, so we can get you on public comment. I think I got that right, no, no, Mr. Lucas, okay. Our next person, Mr. Alexander.
Thanks, hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I, I'm really excited about the direction that this is going, you know, we, we really do need to raise the, the cost of parking, and we need to make it more available, more like a, a market commodity, and this is heading in that direction. Honestly, I think it's a little bit more complicated than it needs to be, but I, I really, ultimately, I agree with Councilmember Smith, that why not try it? This is a, you know, this potentially heralds a very large change, but this particular change that's before you, it's small, it's going into basically an omnibus bill of different small changes, and it's, it's just an experiment, it's a small experiment, and it'll give us information that'll help decide what goes on. I just want to make sure, though, that you guys understand, this is not going to solve any sidewalk funding problems. The pilot itself is obviously not going to generate a huge amount of revenue if it eventually turns into where these neighborhood parking districts are generating a lot of revenue. Well, first off, sidewalks can't really wait that long. People are walking in the street today. But secondly, that introduces a huge equity problem, you know, because a lot of these core neighborhoods with parking problems really do need sidewalks urgently, but also a lot of these more far-flung neighborhoods, like, what is it called, Blue Ridge, between Dunn and, and College on the north side of town, like, that's never going to have a, a parking district, but it desperately needs a tremendous investment in sidewalks, and especially some of the, like, the poorer neighborhoods, like, if you see, if you look out your window as you go down Bloomfield Road or Second Street, you're going to see people who are, are visibly impoverished, walking on really some extraordinarily poor sidewalks and crosswalks kind of situation, and you're never going to see a parking district down there either. So we got to make sure that we solve the sidewalk problem for the whole city, but I think this is a, a good start on parking policy. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else?
I don't believe anybody else has indicated they'd like to comment.
Okay, and while you're looking, I'll remind the public that you can use the raise hand function if you want to speak, or use the chat feature to let us know. Okay, seeing any? Okay, thank you, that will end public comment section, and now we'll go back to council for final comments. See, oh, Councilmember Volin?
Yes, you know, I admit that this legislation is trying to thread a needle, it's, it's definitely complicated. I reject outright, out of hand, any argument that it is not. Uh, I reject outright, out of hand, any argument that it is not germane, let alone that it is somehow illegal. To uh take this uh very pedantic interpretation of code is to undo years. Of habit of the council. There's any number of amendments that could be claimed to have not been germane to the policy. Uh, I am looking forward to contacting our longtime recently retired Attorney Administrator. To ask about this because I followed his lead for as long as I've been on council. I remember, you know. Uh, never has this been invoked, let alone in the way that uh our friend at the Beacon uh seems to want to to do it. Um, I, you know, I think that uh, I don't care how many words he writes, that's a a complete misinterpretation of code. Uh, so the idea that some of this is illegal is ridiculous. Uh, this is absolutely germane to vehicles and traffic. It's why it's. What Mister Sherman taught me was that if you have a change in a different title, that should have its own. Uh, ordinance, but if you're changing a title, that's about as as much as the germane test gets. So uh, I greatly am put off by this argument, and I find it most unfortunate that anyone would would raise it. Uh, but having said that, uh, one of the things that Ms. Wall uh said was that uh she has struggled to. Uh, convert the parking system to be online uh to serve people during the COVID crisis, and they've done heroic work to. Uh, to get ready to be able to to uh sell permits online without public contact. And she said that she wouldn't really be able to implement this before August fifteenth. And that's A, why I put September fifteenth into the revised amendment, because she would have time at that point, as far as she's told me. And B, uh, you know, I frankly didn't really care whether this amendment passed or not. What I cared about was that we had this conversation. Because it's important to note that, in fact, in the course of discussing this amendment. Uh, what what has opened my eyes and many other people's eyes is the inherent inequity of the neighborhood parking zone system as a whole. And if anyone thinks about it for a minute, it's going to take. Uh, you know, some very complicated legislating to bring everybody on board, okay? What I'm proposing here, I'm going to keep bringing back in some form or other, if we may, uh, it will may benefit for more time. But uh, this is the uh, a very simple, very short-lived trial balloon to demonstrate the concept. Nothing more. A hundred permits available at a market price. Uh, to be sold starting September fifteenth. Uh, for one year only and effectively done by the end of February. I think we're going to know by October or Sep- even September. Uh, what the demand is for these permits. And if they don't sell, there's no harm, no foul. If they do sell. That's a sign that the entire neighborhood zone needs to, the system needs to be rethought. So if it would make people feel more comfortable to have this brought as an amendment. Uh, and passed on, say, September sixteenth, or rather, to have it brought as a separate ordinance, fine. But uh, the idea that somehow it's not germane to a vehicles and traffic ordinance is absurd. And it's wholly appropriate. Finally, I'd say that. Parking Commissions make recommendations, just like committees do, and this is a fundamental thing that people have misunderstood about both boards and commissions and committees. Unless it's statutorily required. Uh, a recommendation is just a recommendation, it's not a requirement. Even plan commission recommendations are just recommendations. They have to be approved by council if they have to come to council, okay? So uh, let no one steer you astray. A recommendation does not mean, I mean, the Parking Commission couldn't prevent. A council member from introducing legislation at any point in the legislative process. So this argument that somehow it was inappropriate is utterly inappropriate. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do believe our administrator, we have another request for a public comment. So um, I'll ask my fellow council members, do we have any? Um, anyone against allowing that? It's a question from the B Square Beacon, I do believe. Okay, seeing none, uh, please proceed, Mister Lucas.
Yes, I I think he was uh having some technical difficulties with his audio and uh we allowed a a late taker for public comment earlier in the meeting. So um, he sent along a message that he asked me to read. On uh Councilmember Stephen Volan's theory of what an allowable amendment is, you could amend uh city code to raise parking meter rates to five dollars tonight through an amendment to this ordinance. I don't think you can. If that's possible, think about how vigilant we, I think the public would have to be anytime there's a Title fifteen change. Uh, there could be an amendment that raises parking meter rates. That's the comment.
Okay, thank him for that comment. Um, do we have any other final comment from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, um, I think this uh amendment raises a lot of interesting issues and um. It deserves, these issues deserve further scrutiny and further discussion. But I do feel like uh. The um amendment itself and the changes it proposes are um. Are not, I think we need more more time to discuss the issues involved. Um, I I agree that uh our boards and commissions, they just make recommendations. We don't have to follow them. Um, but the the Parking Commission is a group of individuals, just like all our commissions. They have experience, they've looked at the issue um that that their commission focuses on uh in different um. With different perspectives, uh, all different questions from different areas of the city regarding parking have gone through that commission. Uh, so I think it's very important to have their viewpoint, and they, as far as I know, they they've not seen the latest. Iteration of this amendment, and so we do not have their input. So I think that's problematic. I also see as problematic what Councilmember Flaherty said about the um inequity of. Uh, charging renters more than four times as much as sing- as people who live in single-family residences in the same zone. Um, I mean, I know that there's an inequity inherent in the um. In the uh neighborhood parking program in that most of the time, uh, people who live in multifamily residences aren't even allowed to buy any permits. Um, except maybe, except the new uh, the new temporary visitor permits. So uh, that is a problem, and I I think it's it's inequitable. I think um. It shouldn't really be perpetuated and and made even worse by this particular amendment. Um, and it it does seem to me that uh I agree again with Councilmember Flaherty that. If we want to know what the demand is, we could just open it up to multifamily residents and see how many permits we sell up to a certain limit. And then we could have this longer discussion uh with the experts of the Parking Commission, with. Um, people in different neighborhoods about the future of the neighborhood parking zone program. And whether it should be open to multifamily residents. Um, and whether the price should be increased, again, um, beyond what was passed in two thousand eighteen, which was an incremental increase. Um, to really cover all the costs and maybe even pay for some sidewalks. So I, there there are so many questions um that. At this point, I do not feel comfortable voting in favor of this amendment. Um, I do think the amendment is germane to title um to to this uh ordinance. Um, but I think the um, the main point, at least that Mister Paul was making, was that. Um, it's uh, it's a big enough change that he's concerned that there are members of the public who are concerned. That this didn't get a first reading and wasn't, you know, the final version just came out today, so the public didn't really have a chance to. To read it and digest it and comment on it. So I think that that's a legitimate concern. So I'll be voting no on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Flaherty, did you have, yeah, Councilmember Flaherty?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um. Yeah, like I said, in my question to Councilmember Volan, um, I think. The, and and like Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, I think there are a lot, like, a lot of really important issues here that we're discussing and that we need to continue to examine. And I've had an initial conversation with Ms. Wall about this and would like to continue working on this. In the coming months, honestly, because if we want to, you know, fix some of the inequity inherent in the neighborhood residential zone program. For next year, as well as the visitor program, uh, you know, we really need to start working on that now. Um, because it's kind of, the program's already started this year. It's difficult to change things midstream, but. Uh, again, some of these inequities, uh, you can buy an annual visitor permit for the entire year. You just have a visitor permit you just put in a car for forty-six bucks. If you live in a single-family detached home. If you live in a duplex, you can't get one at all. After, if we pass this tonight, you'll be able to buy eleven dollars a night. Eleven dollars a night for a permit if you live in a duplex, uh, forty-six dollars for the year for your visitor permit if you live in a single-family detached home. Uh, you know, the same can be said about the ability to even get a neighborhood permit or not. Um, and and uh, that's just really, really fundamentally inequitable. Uh, you know, even Councilmember Volan spoke about what would or wouldn't fly in the neighborhood based on. You know, I think an assumption about the Neighborhood Association and who that represents. But everybody who lives in the zone and lives in the neighborhood is a member of that neighborhood, and they should have a, you know, they should have a stake in in what gets done, and they should. Uh, you know, they should all have a right to the streets, just like a multifamily building might have a parking lot. Uh, most single-family homes have the ability to have a driveway or a parking pad. In fact, most do. Uh, you know, all of Zone Six, more or less, has alley access, and it seemed to me with a quick satellite. View search that that people overwhelmingly have have the ability to park off-street. Um, I think Zone Six is unique in some ways. I mean, it's about that being next to the stadium, uh, so for football games in particular, which, you know, aren't happening this fall. Um, sadly, in the end, anyway, but um, I thi- I think uh, there's a lot of issues to work through to make this. An equitable equitable program that will work uh for all zones, and and that might mean, you know, uh. Pricing to the market differentially in different zones, um, even. Uh, but I think, you know, to Ms. Galvin's point. Um, you know, that that this, or to Mister Volan's point, that this is less equitable somehow, because it at least allows people to to buy in at some price. Um, you know, when you're excluded from something entirely, you become really grateful for anything, but I, it, that doesn't make it a fair outcome. And I think Ms. Galvin mostly spoke about visitors, and we are going to solve at least that opportunity problem with the temporary visited visitor permit program, presumably. Uh, the other thing I would say is that um. Uh, like Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I think we can demonstrate market demand in a different way that is less inequitable, and I think we can bring that in an ordinance in in two, two weeks from now if we want. And I'd be happy to work on that with Councilmember Volan, which is to bring, you know, or independently or with any other council member, which is to bring. Uh, open it up to any resident of the zone and just simply cap, you know, the number of permits sold. Um, and and if we could do that via ordinance, uh, it would allow us to demonstrate market demand by. Uh, the additional requests we have for permits above and beyond what space allows. Uh, and that too will make the case that you should price to to demand in an equitable way. Um, so I'm I'm happy to pursue that, uh, and probably will, um, if this amendment fails tonight, but I won't be voting for it for some of those reasons. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Um, Councilmember Scambleri.
Thank you. Um. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Flaherty made some great points, and I appreciate that. Um, several things probably about this, this um. About this amendment, we are trying to demonstrate proof of concept, but I think there's a way to do that with parity and in how much. We are asking people to pay for these permits. Um, I really still question whether or not any data that we gather this year will be data that we can trust, because this is such an unusual year. Um, and finally, I I would, I think this is germane to any discussion of vehicles and traffic, so I don't have an issue there. Um, but it also feels qualitatively different than a lot of the other issues in this ordinance. There there's a difference between adjusting, a qualitative difference, I think. Between adjusting a speed limit on the street and changing the way we do business. And so for that reason, I think it does deserve the fuller process uh and multiple, so I won't be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. Uh, any further counsel, Councilmember Volan?
Yes. Um. I need to give a little background on the history of this amendment so that you can understand why it seems rushed. The Parking Commission was out of commission until June twenty eighth. I tried to get it on their agenda as quickly as I could. We talked about it in June and July. I modified it based on their feedback. The three-three vote that did, that failed to give a positive recommendation was based on the three-tiered system, which uh. And it was because it wa- and also that it was inequitable, uh, that uh, single-family uh. You know, like the the, for the reasons that have been taken out of the revised version. So uh, all this was to try to get in place something that by August fifteenth would allow. Uh, those spaces to be used by people who live in the zone, even if they don't live in single-family dwellings. That was my goal. I feel like I've done my duty to the neighborhood. I've done my best to serve them to try to solve this problem. And uh, you know, while I don't particularly like the apparent haste. That uh, this legislation uh has been characterized as being, uh, it's not at all inappropriate. Um, also, this proposal was very small. It was reduced and reduced and reduced to a temporary, one-time, hundred permits only. Let's see what happens. Again, sure, uh, we're not going to, I mean, you technically, that's right, that COVID is going to skew the numbers, but which way? Uh, again, if the permits sell out even during COVID, that's amazing, but if they don't sell out. That's not an indication of anything, and maybe there's not a problem. So we could have found out. Um, uh, so this revision was a response to the plan to Parking Commission's. Uh, you know, uh, lack of support for it. Um, I certainly want to go back to Parking Commission. Uh, but the time to introduce the legislation to get it done on September fifteenth. I mean, we'll be lucky to get it done by October one at this point, and the diminishing returns will will increase. I mean, I'm not sure who's going to want a permit by October, but. Uh, you know, it's it's not uh worth giving up on yet. Um, yes, this uh resol- this uh amendment uh is not theoretically equitable, but it's very practically equitable. It uh, uh, you know, to to, th- there's no way I would support it, uh, just opening up. Uh, permits to any resident of the zone, because we would have a hue and cry like. Compare, you could compare it to the comprehensive plan over plexes. It would be that big a deal, because that's what people are used to. It's going to take a different kind of change. This was that change. We still can make a change like it. It just, maybe not tonight, but uh. You know, the Neighborhood Association absolutely would not support it. The ones who asked for the zone in the first place, they would not support opening up the zone at the same price. Uh, it would sell out in minutes and uh, you know, I wouldn't support that, and and I'm not proposing it. So having said that, I'm happy to work with people to try to bring forward uh a a uh. More, let's call it a more understandable proposal. Um, I studied this issue very thoroughly, very deeply. I'm firmly convinced. That this is the way to at least establish a market and to demonstrate to the rest of the city, especially other neighborhood zones. That they need to have a hard rethink of their neighborhood zone program, that it's it's uh grossly subsidized. And the reasons that we implemented the neighborhood zone program back in nineteen ninety-two are different now. There's a lot more people in the city. There's a lot more uh demand for on-street parking than just commuting to IU. So I welcome anyone who wants to discuss uh the overhaul of the neighborhood parking zone. Uh, and I want to make sure it's understood that this amendment was a very small initial effort to try to. Uh, get that conversation started and to have proof of concept, to show receipts to say, look at the demand. Uh, it it looks like we're not going to get that opportunity this year. It's too bad, but I'm glad we had the discussion, and I very much appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Um, if we have no other council comments, I'll take a shot. Thank you. Um, all I really want to say is, um, um, first of all, thank you for bringing that, Councilmember Volan. I'm satisfied after this conversation that um it appears to be germane, and we will have other conversations. Um, I will say that asking about legalities or whether it was germane at the beginning. Was not an indictment and should not be looked upon as such. Um, it's just a question which I'm allowed to ask during council. Comment and question period as any other council. It's just a question which I'm allowed to ask during council comment and question period as any other council member is. And having said that, are we ready for a vote on this amendment? Okay, seeing head shaking, Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rolo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
No.
Sims?
No.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
And Flaherty?
No.
Okay, that's four, four. Did I count it correctly? So the amendment fails. Okay, so thank you. And I will now pass the gavel back to the Honorable President Volan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Much appreciated. Is there an amendment six?
Move amendment six to ordinance twenty twelve.
Second.
Motion to second. The maker of the amendment is not here tonight. Ms. Piedmont Smith, will you, can you, can you present it?
Yes, I just need to find the right document. Sorry. All right, so this amendment. Changes some language in regard to motorcycle parking. And I believe the intention is to. To not, not discourage the use of motorcycles and mopeds. Because those are more fuel efficient vehicles than cars. So it makes a distinction. Between motorcycles and class A and class B motor driven cycles, which are smaller. So it, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for showing the amendment on the screen. So it adds a couple of definitions. It refers to Indiana code for what is a class A motor driven cycle and a class B motor driven cycle. And then it changes where in the ordinance, it, it said that no person shall park a motorcycle on a. Class two bicycle parking facility. And it makes it clear that this restriction does not apply to class A or class B motor driven vehicles. So a moped or a Vespa or something like that could still park. In a bicycle, in a bike rack. And then it also deletes language in the ordinance that says, no person shall park a motorcycle or moped in city owned public parking garages in a space not designated and signed as being reserved for motorcycles. So in other words, it allows. Motorcycles and class A and class B motor driven vehicles to park in a, any parking space in our garages. So Councilmember Rosenbarger couldn't be here tonight, so I'm just hopefully summarizing accurately on her behalf.
Thank you. If that concludes the presentation, I'll take questions from members on amendment six. Can we also talk about the, she's also the chair of the Transportation Committee and she had a report. I don't think there was any. It was a three oh one vote, I believe. So the committee supported it.
May I just ask? May I ask staff to give their opinion of the amendment?
That's a good idea. Could, could administration staff weigh in on amendment six?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. This is Michelle, the Director of Parking Services. The only concern I have, and unfortunately I was unable to attend the last transportation committee meeting. Is that why we requested the designated signs in the garages for motorcycle was due to safety reasons. It's important to have them on a flat surface and it's important for them to be identified in garages as they, if they are able to park in any area. Second floor, third floor, they're driving through drive lanes and oftentimes they're invisible to the people that are backing out or coming around the corner that are backing out. So the only, the only thing that I would like the council to consider is that we only did the designated. Spaces for safety reasons, not to segregate them from the other traffic, but kind of to segregate them for their safety. For their own safety. Oftentimes motorcycles aren't visible in garages if they're driving straight through the drive lanes and when people are backing out. So I asked the council to consider that we do approve designated motorcycle spaces in garages for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there questions for, about the amendment from members? Anybody? No questions at all? We spent some time with this in Transportation Committee, so, all right. If there are no questions, we'll go to the public for comment on amendment six to ordinance twenty twelve. Do you remember the public who would like to speak to amendment six motorcycle parking? Please raise your hand. I see a hand raised, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, Joseph should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joe Nychum. I support amendment six to ordinance twenty twelve as written. I believe that it now balances the needs of people who utilize motorcycles and motor driven cycles with the burden on the city to accommodate them equitably with other modes of transportation. Vehicles classified as M D C A and or M D C B are small lightweight vehicles that if not secured to rigid structure in some way are easy to steal. They can be easily lifted and put into the bed of a truck or back of a van. In a lot of instances, a bicycle rack may be the most convenient location to tether an M D C A or M D C B vehicle to. In addition, by implementing the state's definition of M D C A and M D C B, the amendment as written provides clarity for enforcement should there be a violation against it. I also support there being dedicated and secure parking for motorcycles and motor driven cycles, both within parking garages and on surface parking locations. To avoid utilizing parking infrastructure that is intended for bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further public comment on amendment six? Second call for public comment on amendment six. Please raise your hand and zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers? Final call?
Yes, there's.
Yes.
Okay.
Sam should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Please state your full name.
Hi there, I am Samuel Welsh Sven. And I don't have a lot to say.
Go ahead, please, yeah.
Sure, yeah, but I'm just in agreement with everything that Joe said. And happy to see that there will be dedicated parking spots for motorcycles. So thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Last call? So Lucas, is there any more?
Yes.
If not, we'll come.
Yes, sorry. We have Michael Waterford, who should be unmuted and ready to go.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, I just also wanted to voice my support for the amendment as well.
Thanks very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for second round of questions or comment. I did have a question. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, is it a question or a comment?
It's a question.
Please go ahead.
The amendment does not create designated motorcycle slash moped parking spaces in our garages, does it? I, I don't know who I'm asking since the sponsor.
Ms. Wall, can you clarify?
I don't think it does. Maybe I can ask Ms. Wall.
Yeah, Ms. Walls. Yeah.
So when I recommended this, this came from actually parking enforcement. So Rayanne's on this meeting as well and she's an enforcement manager. What the, what this stemmed from is motorcycles parking in bicycle racks. We currently did not have any way to cite the individuals that were doing this. So we said, well, we need to give them a place to park. If they can't find a place to park on the street in a parking space, which is allowed at a meter and they can park up or three, four motorcycles if they'd like, as long as the meter is fed. Then we, we needed to provide them a dedicated space in the garage and pay the appropriate rate. That was the First Amendment. Now, like I said, I missed the transportation committee meeting and I wasn't there to speak on it. But the whole intent of this was to provide designated parking spaces in the parking garage to service motorcycles or mopeds in a specific space for their safety.
May I ask a follow up question?
Please go ahead.
So the ordinance. If we ignore the amendment for a moment, the ordinance itself, does it create these dedicated motorcycle parking spots in our garages?
I think I see it there, the crossed out, see the struck out language? No person shall park a motorcycle or moped in city owned public parking garages in any space not designated and signed as being reserved for motorcycles. This prohibited motorcycles from parking in garage spaces for cars.
That's not my question, Mr. Volan. My question was for Ms. Wall or Ms. Cox. The ignoring the amendment for a moment, the ordinance as proposed, does it create? Either initial or additional motorcycle parking spaces in our garages?
What I believe the, the, the ordinance stated was, and I don't know if Rayanne's here before, there was no, there was no ordinance saying a motorcycle could not park in a bicycle rack. Currently, there is no ordinance that states a motorcycle is going to have a designated space in a garage. It can park like any other vehicle.
So how many parking spaces in our garages do we have or do you intend to dedicate to motorcycles?
Right now, it'd be two to three spaces. We only have normally, we're talking four to five motorcycles a year in the garages based on the count from my garage manager. So to create two or three spaces would accommodate the need in every garage. And we do plan to put them on in every garage at the lowest level, flat surface.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? If not, we'll go to debate, final comment on amendment six. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I, I cannot vote for this amendment as it's written. I agree that mopeds should be, you know, with the class A and class B should be allowed to park and connect to, to bike racks. But I disagree with striking the language about them not, them, them having to park in a designated space because of the reasons Ms. Wall indicated that it's for their own safety. So. I mean, I don't know if anybody has an appetite at ten twenty five in the evening when we still have a whole nother ordinance to, to consider an amendment to this. But at this point, I would have to vote no and, but I would be happy to, to address the. Parking at bike racks separately at a later date.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, I watched the Transportation Committee meetings and I believe the three gentlemen who spoke in favor of this amendment. And who are still here all spoke in favor of it at the Transportation Committee meeting as well. And I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Sven said something to the effect of. Sometimes the designated motorcycle spots are full. So if you are in a motorcycle and you don't have a garage permit, but you want to park in a garage and you arrive and three permit holders are in the three designated spots or just anybody. That it would be unfortunate and and you could, you can imagine the frustration of a, of a motorcycle or moped user to arrive at a garage only to have many empty spaces, perhaps on the top floor, you know, on a flat surface or. Perhaps there are motorcycles with the type of kickstand that the angle of the parking is not a problem. I don't know, I don't know enough. But I think that they, they were voicing a concern that we are going to say you can only park in these designated spots, but those aren't always available and there's no way they really guarantee that. And so I wonder, you know, I know we've already taken public comment, but since this issue kind of wasn't, this particular wrinkle wasn't brought up until after public comment. I wonder if, if President Volan would consider entertaining comment from Mr. Sven, who I see has raised his hand.
Well, we've already set that precedent tonight, so I'm forced to say yes. If there's no strong objection. All right, Mr. Sven, if you would speak.
Thank you, yeah, I'll keep it brief, but yeah, I, I just find it hard to believe that there's only five or six motorcycles ever in the parking garage. I've shared the, the one space that is on the square, the single space. I've shared that with multiple motorcycles more than once. So I would just like to see more spots in general and it'd be cool if they were in the parking garage. And I think, I think if motorcycles were encouraged a little bit more by having spots, like there are no spots, so no one knows that they can park downtown. So I think if we encourage motorcycles by providing a few more spots, I think they would be filled up. And I think motorcycles are part of like an overall solution to like climate change and all that because they require less resources to make them and that they use and they take up less parking spots. And they even kind of look cool if you think of Europe, like all the motorcycles on the, on the sidewalk. So I know this is a parking garage, but I would just like to encourage multiple spots and I think that they would get used if they were created. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're now getting into second round comments from the public and I'm a little reluctant to encourage this, we're going very late. I will allow the public comment if it's very brief. Please, let's go to the next one.
Another member of the public, Greg Alexander, who should be unmuted now.
Hi, Greg Alexander here, just wanted to share the trivia because I've spent a lot of time in parking garages on a bicycle counting cars, obviously. There is on most, in most of the garages, there is a flat spot here and there, even outside of the first floor due to the shape of the garage, just being, no, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Can we also? Sorry?
Joe Nychum has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, yes.
Mr. Sims?
Thank you. Not that I'm objecting to further public comment, but when we did open up additional public comment, it, it was for a new person who hadn't spoken before. So I just thought I'd say that.
You're, you're, you're correct about that and I regret this departure from procedure, but I will allow Mr. Nychum to speak very briefly.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify, so the amendment as written removes the finable offense of a motorcycle parking in a car spot. The original or the, the original amendment has it that if a motorcycle parks in a car spot, it is a finable offense. The amendment removes that fine. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go to staff.
All right, we have one more member who's indicated over chat. Michael Waterford should be ready to go.
All right, Mr. Waterford, make it brief.
Sorry to delay you, but I just wanted to say, just like bicycles, it's cyclical, it just looked like what Sam was saying. The benefits of this type of transportation are. what Sam was saying, the benefits of this type of transportation are hidden in plain sight, and the fuel efficiency, reducing traffic congestion, cheaper barriers of entry, cheaper to operate, cheaper to park, promotes efficient land use, and all these wonderful things need to be considered. Because really, it's just like bicycle infrastructure. Are we going to promote better behaviors, or are we going to weed it out? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can we go back to staff? Is Wall or Ms. Cox available to comment?
So, I'm going to, Ms. Cox, this is Director Wall. She keeps on getting muted. So, if somebody can unmute her, so she can have a part in this, I would.
Mr. Lucas, can you unmute Ms. Cox?
I can ask her to unmute herself. She's a co-host. She should be in control of her own audio.
She tried, and she keeps on getting muted back.
I'm here now.
I heard her.
Okay, great. Thanks. Go ahead, Rayanne.
Well, my concern is motorcycles are parking at bike racks, because they don't want to pay to park in a parking space. It takes up spaces that are created for bicycles. That's what the city is promoting, more bicycle traffic. So, and also, most of our bicycle corrals are on the sidewalk. So, that means a motorcycle is going to have to run down the sidewalk to get to these corrals. So, that's public safety. Thank you.
And this is Michelle. We designate bike racks for bikes. We have said that, you know, the new, the scooters can park in certain areas in the city, and why don't we do it for motorcycles? That's just my take on it. They have designated parking areas. We're telling them where they can park. We should be able to do it in our garages.
Yes, I agree.
I have a quick question. Are they, they're parking for free in the garage, or they're paying to park in a motorcycle space in the garage?
There's no motorcycle space currently in the facility designated.
But you would provide a free space, or a paid space?
A paid space. They would pay like anyone else. Oftentimes, you'll see in the city where there's three or four motorcycles in one metered space, which is fine. We're okay with that. As long as that meter's paid, we're fine with that. And it's doable. But to have a motorcycle park, if a motorcycle parked where you see scooters in the city park, that would be problematic, no different than it's problematic in a bicycle rack.
But just to make sure I fully understand the question, this ordinance removes prohibition from parking in a car space in a garage, but it does prohibit a motorcycle from parking at a bike space. Is that right? At a bike rack?
Correct. It gives you designated spaces in a garage to park.
But it prohibits parking at bike racks?
Correct, which we do not have any type of citation.
Understood.
Of that individual.
Thank you. I think I finally understand the question.
Great.
Any other questions, before we go to Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Well, I don't have a question, but.
We can go to comment. I'm ready to go to comment.
I have an amendment to the amendment. I'm really sorry to say.
Is it a Scrivener's error?
No.
Okay.
It is Section D, where it says, no person shall park a motorcycle or moped. In, oh, yes, Mr. Lucas has done a wonderful job, and has already amended what I wanted to amend. So, if you look down at Section D, it is no longer crossed out. So, I want to give Class A and B motor-driven cycles the opportunity to park at bike racks, because I understand that they could just be easily carted off if they're not attached to something. And we want to encourage these very fuel-efficient vehicles. But I do not want to strike the language about the specific part, or specific spaces in a parking garage where Class A and B and full-on motorcycles can park because of safety concerns. If it's a matter of, hey, there are too few parking places for motorcycles in the garages, then let's make more of them. But I still think there should be designated spaces because of the safety concerns that Ms. Wall outlined. So, this is, I think that, I'm very, very sorry to my colleagues, but I think that this, we would have to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and then vote on the amendment.
I also believe, I don't know if Councilmember Piedmont Smith wants to leave in the term "moped" here in this, in this section, but I believe since we've added references to Class A and Class B motor-driven cycles, that that term should be changed as well.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Lucas. You are quite right.
Okay, that's the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
For Councilwoman Piedmont Smith. We have a second. All right. Are there questions for the secondary amendment? Councilwoman Flaherty.
Yeah, I wish, I feel like that exchange sadly did not get to the root of the question, which is, are there safe ways for motorcycles to park in spaces that are not their designated spaces? Greg Alexander mentioned specific spaces that are flat, that would not be designated spaces. There would be car spaces on the second, third, fourth floor of the garage. They would be flat and safe for a motorcycle or moped. But I'd really like to know further, are there spaces that are on the ramp in the garage in which some types of motorcycles or mopeds can park safely? Because if the answer is yes, that combined with the information from Mr. Alexander, suggests to me that it's really unfair to tell a motorcycle, hey, if these three spots that we designated for you are already taken, you know, you can't park in this garage at all without being fined. So, that's the heart of the issue about this amendment to the amendment. And what I'm trying to get answered, and I guess the question is for staff, you know, and the members of the public, if they comment on this. So, if staff can comment on their knowledge very specifically about whether there are any spaces in a parking garage in which a motorcycle or moped can safely park, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, there, and this is Michelle. Thanks, Matt, for your question. Of course, there's other areas on other floors where they can safely park, like you said, as Mr. Alexander pointed out. However, if we find that we do not have a significant amount of spaces for motorcycles, and the demand is higher than what my parking manager has observed, we'll make more. I mean, we can always add more. I can take a space out, a space out and make more, and determine, just to make sure that they are safe and they're on the entry. They need to be seen, and people need to know that. In other garages and other universities I've been at, we didn't have parking, we didn't allow motorcycles to park in the interior spaces of the garage for safety issues. That's why this actually got brought up. We had them at the beginning, where they didn't even have an entry gate. So, there was no, no, no near misses with the gates going up and going down. They had a specified designated space. If we find that this population is growing, which I do support for sustainability, we will add more spaces. And we will add more safe spaces where they can park, and they're visible.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You bet.
Further questions on the secondary amendment to Amendment Six? Does everyone understand the question? Second call. All right, let's go to the public. And actually, could we have the amendment put back on the screen, just for reference? If anybody wants to speak to the secondary amendment to Amendment Six, please raise your hand, or speak into the chat.
So, sorry, take me a second to manage all these things. We've got Joseph, who should be.
Mr. Neukem, you can speak, but just so we know, there's going to be one opportunity to speak at this point. So, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So, to basically cover the thought of making a area safer for motorcyclists, I completely disagree with that. As motorcyclists, we kind of get this innate sense of what is the safest thing for us, especially when we have to dealing with cars. And when it comes to flat spaces within parking garages, the slopes in all of the parking garages are not steep enough to be a detrimental aspect of parking our motorcycles on the kickstands. When you have the center of gravity over both the two tires and the kickstand, it is supported very securely, even on moderate to fairly extreme slopes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment on the secondary amendment to Amendment Six? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, just give me a moment. Michael should be unmuted and ready to comment.
I would agree with Mr. Neukem.
Could you state your full name? State your full name, please.
Michael Waterford is my full name, and I would agree with Mr. Neukem's comments, that the slopes are not a detriment to parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Please raise your hand in Zoom. We're typing to the chat. Mr. Lucas, any takers?
Not that I see.
Okay, last call for public comment on the secondary amendment to Amendment Six? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for further questions or final comment. Councilwoman Scambolary?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's amendment to the amendment, even though it's late. Thank you for doing that. I agree that motorcycles are more environmentally sensitive than cars, most cars are. And I believe we need to incentivize their use. I don't at all object to creating more spaces earmarked for motorcycles in our garages, where that's appropriate. And I really do trust our staff to assess the safety of those spaces in the overall flow. So, for that reason, this amendment to the amendment took care of that concern for me. So, I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Further comment on the secondary amendment to Amendment Six? Seeing none, call for a vote on the secondary amendment.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Epstein.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Oh.
Smith?
Yes.
That's a 611 that secondary amendment carries. We now come back to Amendment Six as amended. Are there any further questions on Amendment Six as amended? All right. We go now to the public for comments on Amendment Six as amended. Here's another chance. Please raise your hand in Zoom, or to type into the chat.
We have Joseph, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Please go ahead.
Apologies if I'm not following this correctly. So, now, the amendment as written will make it a fineable offense for a motorcycle to park in a non-motorcycle spot. That is something that I definitely do not support. I think that is a very bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Yes, we've got Sam, again, who would like to comment, and should be ready to do so.
We'll need to hear the whole, the full name.
Yep, Samuel Welshen here.
Thank you.
I pretty much agree with everything Joseph Neukem says. But also, I'm just curious about what would be the process or the timeline for adding more spaces, if, how would we figure out that there is a demand for more spaces, and what would be that process? That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Further public comment on Amendment Six as amended?
Next up, we've got Greg Alexander.
Hi, this is Greg Alexander. Oh, sorry. This is Greg Alexander. Just, I'm disappointed that you wouldn't listen to the motorcyclists about what's safe for motorcyclists. That's just such a no-brainer. That happens to bicyclists all the time. Nobody ever listens to us about what's safe for us. You just make stuff up. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Lucas? Anybody? All right, I'm going to call it. Let's now come back to the council for Amendment Six as amended. Final comment. Is there any debate on this amendment as amended? Last call. Seeing none? What's that?
President Volan.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, well, obviously, I'm disappointed in the amendment as amended, since I voted against the change. But I wanted to take this opportunity to speak to the issue it creates. And I appreciate Ms. Wall saying that they would gladly add more motorcycle spaces if demand exceeds supply, since they're now restricted to only those spots. I would just hope that we can not just use, you know, permitted spots, or permitted demand, as that metric, because there's plenty of folks who park in garages that don't have permits. So, like, to the three motorcyclists who are on the meeting right now, or anybody else watching, please do reach out to me specifically, if it's an issue, you know, in garages going forward, just so that we can be sure that we're, you know, increasing the volume of spaces, if demand suggests that we should. So, I'm glad we had that discussion, even if I'm disappointed in the result. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from members on Amendment Six as amended? Councilmember Smith?
Can I just ask a question of staff?
You can.
Ms. Wall, how would, if an individual had come upon, motorcyclist, come to the parking, and there were no spots available, is there any way, then, they can park in a regular spot and not be ticketed? Or is that, is it, do they need to, I don't know, what needs to happen there?
So, thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I appreciate that. What would happen is, probably, they would ask for, probably, one of my garage staff, where they could park, and they would probably just say, if there's not enough spaces, this is where we're going to direct people to park. And then they would call me and tell me, today, we're overflowing with motorcycles, if that is the case. Understanding from him and relying on his knowledge, he's been a parking garage manager for five years, that, you know, if it gets, if it gets over, if it's oversold for any reason, he's going to let me know. And I would like to also address the timeline issue in this question as well, as, you know, if we put five spots in there, and three to five spots in there, and it's full, then we'll have to, you know, add more spots. We're not, we're not going to say, no way, we're not going to add any more spots. We can make spots available. And most likely, what would happen, since my staff writes the citations in the garages, we would probably give first-time warnings. We would not penalize the person. Just say, you're parked outside the area, and we'd give warnings, and let them know there are, there is designated parking spaces in the garage, because they're not going to know, because there's never been designated spaces in the garage. We're going to have to educate them. And we're more than happy to give the warnings, you know, to those individuals that have never received a citation before. We're going to be, we're going to be generous with this, as it is, it would be new. But there would be at no time, if someone told me that we needed more spaces, we would not accommodate those spaces.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wall. I just, I just thought I'd make sure I asked that out loud, because the points that the gentleman who are riding motorcycles in are commenting tonight, I mean, I don't really want to penalize them, and nor do you, for parking in the garage, you know, if there's more motorcycles than motorcycle spaces. So, it sounds like you have an avenue, and have thought this out. So, if they reach out to you, I think we can work this out.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comment on Amendment Six as amended? Seeing none, will the clerk please? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment six as amended?
Councilmember Flaherty.
I'm sorry.
Did you have a comment? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. I know it's very late. Only to say that by suggesting the gentleman contacted me, I didn't mean to subvert a chain of command or insult Miss Wismansall. So I hope that was not interpreted that way. I just meant I want to make sure we're following up on it and I'm confident staff will be doing that as well. So just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Absolutely, Matt. No problem. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Will Clerk McDowell please call the roll?
Councilmember Rollo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That amendment passes eight zero. We now come back to ordinance, I lost track of it, 2012 as amended. Is there, are there any questions on ordinance 2012 as a whole as amended? We now go to public comment on ordinance 2012 as a whole. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the entirety of this ordinance as it has been changed? Please let Mr. Lucas know by raising your hand in Zoom or typing into the chat. First call. Second call for comment on ordinance 2012 as amended in its entirety. Final call, please type your, type into the chat or raise hand in Zoom. Seeing no public comment, we come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance 2012 as amended? Going once, going twice, checking to make sure I catch Councilman Flaherty. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2012 as amended?
Councilmembers Scambolary? Sims?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rollo?
Yes.
Ordinance 2012 passed eight zero. Thank you very much. It has passed 10:30. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion as to whether or not to introduce the next item?
Mr. President?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Because we're doing all introductions as roll call votes, I think I could just make a motion to have the clerk introduce and read ordinance 2014 by title and synopsis only, and then they can vote on it.
Point of order. Mr. Lucas, if the council refuses to introduce legislation, does that kill it? Or can it be postponed? In other words, a 10:30 rule vote, I think, is different than voting to introduce.
So the council, under our local code, if it would like to introduce an item for council action after 10:30, it requires a two-thirds vote. I would suggest if the council doesn't intend to consider this item tonight, a motion to postpone would be in order. And I, at the moment, this may be premature, but I don't believe there are any items scheduled for action on August 26th. So that's one possibility. That's not a suggestion one way or the other, but a two-thirds vote would be required to introduce an act on this at this time tonight.
Okay, Ms. Piedmont Smith, go ahead.
Oh, I thought I already did.
Piedmont Smith's motion to introduce.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce ordinance 2014? A two-thirds vote would be required to hear it tonight.
Councilmember Sims?
You're muted, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Wow. All right. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 20-14, an ordinance to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, regarding reflecting a proposed redesign of Seventh Street as the Seven Line. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends Title 15, Vehicles and Traffic, of the Bloomington Municipal Code to accommodate the design and eventual construction of the Seven Line project located along Seventh Street by making various parking and intersection changes along the project's route.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2014 be adopted.
Thank you.
The motion has passed. I think Beth Rosenbarger is here to present, along with Neil Copper. Ms. Rosenbarger, the floor is yours, or the screen, rather, is yours.
All right, thank you. My voice is a tiny bit tired, but I'm great. This is Beth Rosenbarger, the Planning Services Manager, the City of Bloomington, and I'm getting used to presenting this at 11:00 PM. So let me pull my screen up. One second. Mainly, I am going to try to do an abbreviated version and I hope that you all will, council members can let me know if they have questions, because I have plenty of information. But I presented a full presentation of this project to the Transportation Committee, I think that was last week. And I plan to address questions that council members have asked, but if there's any need for more information, I can get into more detail. So tonight, the main requests we are making are basically the changes, the detailed changes to Title 15 that are required and are part of the design of the title, I'm sorry, the Seven Line project. And these are really the key design components of it. Basically requesting to remove parking spaces along the street, which is 113-metered spaces, requesting to remove those and requesting to remove 13-zone spaces. We're requesting to modify several stop intersections, and each of those are listed. I'm not going to read them. And there are some other related code changes detailed in the ordinance. The reason this is important is this is a trade-off. We cannot have the two-way protected bike lane and the on-street parking. So at this point, we're asking for approval for these changes that would take effect about a year from now when the project would be constructed. So that's why we want to have this conversation now and see if we can get approval. In addition, this project has been seen by a number of groups. So you all, council members, may remember that it was part of the bicentennial bond package in 2018. It was, of course, conceptual at that time, and we did not know all the changes. It has been reviewed by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, the Traffic Commission, and the Parking Commission. There was a public meeting held on June 18th, 2020, a virtual public meeting, of course. Obviously, we discussed just questions at a council work session, and this has been presented and reviewed by the Council Transportation Committee. So the corridor we're talking about is Seventh Street in Bloomington from the Beeline Trail to Woodlawn Avenue. This project is recommended as a high-priority project for Phase One to be implemented within one to three years in our recently adopted transportation plan. So hooray for us for moving forward with plans that we've adopted. So this is an image, just a Google Street view of Seventh Street as it is right now. From this vantage point, you are on Seventh looking east and you're at the intersection with Walnut. And I want you to just think about if you were to be riding a bicycle here, would you want to be? Does that feel comfortable? And what is that, what is that like? This is another image of existing on Seventh Street at the intersection with Dunn, also facing east. If you look pretty far down, Seventh is closed, ignore that, it doesn't matter for this. If you were bicycling right here in this space and heading east, you would need to take the lane. And that means a person should feel comfortable or hopefully feels comfortable behaving as if they're a car and driving, biking down the middle of a lane. It's the safest space, because if you go too far to the right, as you can see up ahead, you'll be close to parked cars. And being close to a parked car, there's a danger of being doored. Since we've been presenting this project, I have heard from three people that they have been doored on the street, actually. And then if we continue moving farther east as we get to campus, this is now facing west. But if you were, if you were braving this and biking down here, now you see we have these interactions with transit. Of course, it is a high-transit corridor and the bus is pulling over into the bicycle lane. It makes sense that the bus pulls over because they need to access pedestrians on the curb, and that makes more sense for loading and is safer. But if you were a person using the bicycle lane, at this point, you need to get back into the street and hopefully you had a safe interaction with the bus as they were pulling over into that bike lane. So what this, I just wanted to take a look at what it's like existing to think about who will use this space as it is designed currently, and why do we need to do something different here? These are the bicyclists who would be comfortable using Seventh Street as it's designed. Maybe you're familiar with the cutters. We're basically, we usually consider them the top 1% to 5% of bicyclists. They are predominantly younger white men who feel comfortable rubbing elbows with motor vehicles and kind of jockeying down the street. That's great that they feel comfortable doing that, but most people don't. So when we reflect back on our adopted goals of the comprehensive plan, these are all related to increased sustainability of the transportation system, to improve public transit, and goal 6.3, improve the bicycle and pedestrian network. We know if we're improving the bicycle and pedestrian network, we are going to be accommodating more people than just these types of riders here. Additionally, we state to prioritize non-automotive modes and to protect neighborhood streets. And if we move toward these goals and think about redesigning the street, the users we want to accommodate fall into this group on the left of your screen. They're commonly called the interested but concerned bicyclist. These are people who will bike only on the Beeline in Bloomington or Clear Creek Trail or Jackson Creek Trail or on the Trail Trial and Cascades. But biking next to moving motor vehicle traffic is just not going to fly for this group of people. And it makes sense, but it's pretty rational. There's a big difference there. So when we talk about the interested but concerned group, people who are comfortable on the Beeline, we are talking about parents biking with children. These are not images from Bloomington. I borrowed them from the internet, just as a side note. We are talking about parents who would bike with their kids on the Beeline, who would bike with their kids when they're separated from traffic. We're talking about kids bicycling and where kids can feel safe bicycling. And we're also talking about people biking to work, that you don't want to be racing down a street. You need some comfortable space and to feel safe doing that. So what that means to accommodate that user group is physical separation. And this is just an example cross-section. And this is also what we're proposing for Seventh Street, but not to scale. So from the left, we have a sidewalk. You have separation between the sidewalk and the bike lane. That can include benches or street trees or wider sidewalk, anything. But the distinction is then a curb, and then we have a bike lane, another curb that separates the bicyclist from moving traffic. Within that street buffer, you can have trees and we can have bus stops, which we do in the proposal. And then you have moving traffic, and each mode is separated. So this is the same intersection we were looking at at the beginning with the proposal. So now you're standing in Seventh Street, you're looking east at Walnut. You know, you can see the garage over on your left, but now you can see the space where you would be bicycling. It's separated with a median and street trees. It has bumpouts at the intersection to calm traffic and to make that easier and safer to navigate for a range of users. And the same, this is us looking from the intersection of Woodlawn facing west down Seventh. And on the left, where we saw the bus pulled over in the bike lane, what you see in this rendering is a floating bus island. So pedestrians would be on the sidewalk. They have raised crossings to go over to the bus island. And then the bus island is right there next to traffic for easy and fast bus boarding and alighting. This corridor has a lot of transit use and ridership during non-COVID times. There on the south side of the street are four bus stops currently. I'm sorry, there are four bus routes on the corridor, 10 bus stops and four bus stops are on the south side of the street. There are usually almost 300 bus trips a day, and they carry 3,400 passengers per day. There are about five to 10 minor collisions each year with buses, and those are buses where their side mirrors hit parked cars. Our proposal includes combining two of the bus stops on the south side, so there would be three bus stops total. We've worked with Bloomington Transit on that, and they are on board. So just a couple examples, and I don't plan to go through the whole project, although I'm happy to do so if you all want that. It was in the packet, and we've done it at a few meetings. But again, so this is the block from Walnut to Washington Street. And you'll see along the bottom, this is on the south side of the street, a two-way protected bike lane. You see a raised, separated median, and then the gray area is a floating bus island. Again, there are three included. Each of them is slightly different based on where they're located and ridership. So the one near Woodlawn is larger in order to accommodate two buses and in order to accommodate the high level of ridership that we see at that stop. And then this is another example of the bus island with the overview at the intersection of Woodlawn and Seventh. The facility at this time ends at Woodlawn, and bicyclists transition back to the other sides of the street. Additionally, with these bus stops, there are big differences with these compared with what's on Third Street where we have bus islands in that there are basically speed bumps for bicyclists and slightly raised crossings for the pedestrians. The island is much bigger and easier to navigate and helps for loading two buses at one time. Along the entire corridor, the bike lane width varies. 10 feet is about the minimum. So it's, so that you have five feet in each direction. So in terms of parking, there are currently 121-metered spaces on the street. We are requesting to remove 113-metered spaces. In 2019, those 121 meters generated $160,000 in revenue. Based on 121 meters for one year, the total amount of revenue possible would have been $462,000. And, and 462, I said it wrong, sorry. It's 11:00 PM. And that is based on 121 meters, six days per week, 13 hours per day, and 49 weeks in the year. That's making it a little conservative and generous based on city holidays and times that meters are out or broken. So that represents the amount of revenue they generated out of that possible total is 35% of possible revenue. A caveat is in 2019, the combo zone was still in effect until August, and it included 55 of the meters. The data is not perfect, but it is an approximation. Councilmember Bolan had asked for more data on the combo zone meters, and Parking Services Director Michelle Wall put that together. and um Parking Services Director Michelle Wall put that together for us, thank you, which was that we compared 2018, five month totals for the combo zone meters and 2019 totals and the difference is um $4,400 in terms of over the five months what they generated when it, when the combo zone was removed. And then just to add in, again, it's 113 metered spaces and 13 zone spaces. Um, on Dunn Street, there, we are adding 11 metered spaces and 33 zone spaces. That was already done through, um, that has already been changed in the Title 15, uh, but it has not been added to the street yet. And so finally, the other request in addition to the parking question was about stop signs along the corridor and we talked about it in the memo and the plan. But um, the request is to remove most east-west stop signs except at the intersection of the B line and Seventh. Um, at the other intersection, Seventh Street carries more traffic than any of the cross streets where we're, where we are proposing to remove the stop sign, which is sometimes surprising. We were surprised by some of those numbers. At the B line and Seventh, the numbers are about even in terms of how much traffic is carried on both facilities, um, on Seventh Street and on the B line. Currently at the B line at this intersection, all B line trail users are required to stop, to fully stop and that um people driving are um not required legally to yield. If you've been in that space uh and have witnessed this, you'll know that most often people driving do yield and tend to wave on people on the B line. So one reason we're requesting that change is kind of about current behaviors. But additionally, this is a transition point where it's the western edge of the project right now. And this bike facility will go from being on one side of the street to where people will need to maneuver and go continuing west, move back to the north side of the street. Um, and I think the logic is having motor vehicles stop will help make that transition much safer for um for users. And that's all I put together, but I have more. And also Neil Copper, our interim transportation engineer, I'm sorry, what's the real title, Traffic and Transportation City Engineer, is on the call too.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
It does. I have plenty more slides if you want more.
Well, let's see what appetite my colleagues have for more slides. Are there any questions uh for Ms. Rosenbarger or Mr. Copper about the proposal? I need to scroll because the share screen is on.
Just as a reminder, right? Um, this was heard at the Transportation Committee and uh I believe there was a report included.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Yes. Can we get a report from a committee member? I think Councilman Piedmont Smith.
Um, okay, I need to uh open it up here. So um we just took one meeting of the committee last Wednesday to discuss this ordinance. And um uh, we reviewed, you know, that it was funded by Park Bonds and it's uh between the B line and, and Woodlawn Avenue. There are many goals in the comprehensive plan that are uh supported through this change on Seventh Street. I think the whereas clauses outline several of those. Um, and we voted to approve by a vote of 400.
Okay, are there questions for Ordinance 2014 from members? Councilmember Scamblerie.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'm very much in favor of this and I think it's an exciting project. I do have a question, just particularly for the benefit of the public. You mentioned that we would be looking at a loss of, we would not collect 462,000 and change um from giving up the meters. Is that correct?
Hi, this is that, oops, I'll clarify that one. I was stating that is their potential collection amount, sorry, and that they did collect 160,000, yes.
Okay, got it. And does staff have any further comments on the implications of that money not coming in? Is there anything you want us to consider from staff's point of view about that?
This is Michelle Wall, Parking Service Director. Um, it concerns me. I, I can't lie, $160,000, losing it. I support the project in its entirety, but um when it comes to losing $160,000 annually, that it, that is a hit for Parking Services. So I appreciate that question, Councilmember Scamblerie. Thank you.
And there are no solutions. There are only trade offs. So thank you. That's it.
Further questions from members on Ordinance 2014? Are there further questions? Going once? Twice? Time for public comment on Ordinance 2014. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the proposal? Please state your name. You have five minutes. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody?
Yes, Greg Alexander, who should now be ready to comment.
Please go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander here. Uh, this project is awesome. Um, what I've seen over the last couple decades really is that we've built a bunch of side paths, shared use side paths uh for bicycles ostensibly. And there's a bunch of engineering guidelines. Our own uh growth policies plan said that you should only do that if there's fewer than, I think, 10 driveway or intersection crossings per mile. And uh, the Ashtoe Guide to Development of Bicycle Facility said 20 years ago, it said, just don't do side paths because you can't do a good job at intersections. Uh, now it says you can do it, but you have to be really careful at intersections. Uh, NACTO has a guide that's called um, Don't Give Up at the Intersection. Like, that's how big a problem of side paths that, that just give up at the intersection are. And that's really, we've ignored all of that guidance systematically. Every side path we have is a complete disaster at almost every intersection and almost every driveway crossing. And it's, it's terrifying. It makes them really unsafe. But this project is the opposite of that bit pattern of failure. Every single intersection in this project is meticulously designed. There are flaws, there are trade offs, there are, there are challenges, but it is amazing to see uh that we are finally embracing the idea that we should engineer intersections so that bicycles can have safe passage. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Further comment from the public on Ordinance 2014? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Second call? For public comment on Ordinance 2014? Mr. Lucas, you'll flag me down if you see anybody. Final call for public comment on Ordinance 2014? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on Ordinance 2014 or are there further questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, I just want to thank um uh, staff members, Beth Rosenbarger and Neil Copper for staying up late with us and for all their work um on this project. Uh, I think it's a great project. It's very exciting. For, I think it'll be very convenient for a lot of people who live uh downtown or the near west side to get to campus. Uh, hopefully they will leave those cars at home if they have cars and uh won't um miss the parking so much as be appreciative of the ease of bicycling. Um, I personally use this route all the time when I still actually went to an office instead of just down the hall. Um, so I think it's, it's great. Um, and I do, uh, there was a concern shared um at the Transportation Committee meeting about that last um intersection at Woodlawn and Seventh Street and what the bicyclist is supposed to do at that point. So, you know, there's still some things to work out and it's, uh, of course, it would be ideal if um, if the, the bike lane could continue all the way through campus. But hopefully we'll get there eventually. Um, so I'm happy to support this uh tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from members on Councilmember Smith?
On the Transportation Committee and um it's just a great project that we, we looked at and uh talked with uh Ms. Rosenbarger and Neil Copper. And it was a, it's an excellent project. So I think it'll be a great complement and a good uh improvement to that artery in Bloomington. And people will be able to ride their bikes with safety and uh move back and forth in that area. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from members on Ordinance 2014? Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, yes, uh, I appreciate that this project is really upping the ante for our high comfort bike network. You know, we talk about transportation emissions, which are rising in Bloomington over the last seven years, as well as uh the fact that um they make up the largest share of emissions, greenhouse gas emissions of any sector in, in our town, 27%. Uh, so we really need to move not just towards electric vehicles and a, you know, greener energy grid, of course, but also to mode shift and reducing vehicle miles traveled. And, and all the research, you know, says that you won't do that in the biking context without high comfort facilities. Transit, you know, we need to prioritize uh frequency and level of service, you know, getting, getting where you want to go quickly, that sort of thing. But uh, yes, this is really important, uh, you know, step forward. And, and we need to see, you know, more strategic connectors like this that really create a safe, high comfort biking facility throughout the city. Uh, and, and this first step on a good east-west corridor is, is great to see. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith that um, you know, and, and this is termed phase one, the city, you know, has contemplated um, my understanding, uh, an east, east of campus, phase two of something similar. And then, of course, there's a part that goes through campus. And um, uh, I would be really excited to see IU, Indiana University, commit to uh continuing this, which I think would do, uh, you know, even, even more good for the community and for their student body in meeting the goals that IU has articulated in many planning documents about bicycle safety and about climate, um, climate change goals and emissions reduction. So I recall a, a conversation I had once with Adam Teese, who is in Capital Planning and Facilities at IU about protected bike lanes. And, and um, he seemed open to the idea, but he, he assured me that when they did it, whenever that time may come, when they install their first protected bike lane, that it would be um very pretty, that it would be beautifully done. Like, from a design standpoint was, was his uh, his point. They didn't want to do something that didn't look good, in his opinion. Uh, and I think the city of Bloomington committing to um a high quality project, well designed like this uh, helps to show that the city is, you know, willing to commit to that and I hope IU can get on board as well. So uh, I'll be supporting this um ordinance and uh that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Other final comments on 2014? If not, I'll take my crack. Um, but the only thing that I would like to have seen was uh, I liked Mr. Binder's, Aobon Binder's proposal for the easternmost intersection where it interfaces with uh, in front of Ernie Pyle Hall. The, the hook where the people, bikers going westbound cross with the crosswalk on the north side of the intersection, then cross on the west side of the intersection to get to it, instead of just cutting across the intersection. I, I thought that was a, a better solution, a safer solution. Uh, I mean, the best solution would be if IU were willing to uh cooperate and build uh the, the Bike Boulevard Continuit uh east of Woodlawn. Uh, they've already done it, uh, when they took out Seventh Street to prevent buses from going past the auditorium. They've built a semi-protected bike lane already. So it's not like it's not in their real house. And it is very pretty, I must say. It's a very pretty uh, uh, segment of street. So I think that they're capable of doing it now. But having said that, otherwise, this is a fantastic development long in the making. Uh, this is truly a, a full-throated uh contribution to bike infrastructure uh that is really only rivaled by its uh namesake, the B line, which was more than just for bicycles. Um, so I'm very excited about it. Uh, any other comments? If not, we'll take a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2014?
Councilmember Volan.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
That passes eight zero. Thank you to everyone for their patience. Uh, I believe that's it for second readings and we have no first readings. Uh, so that thank you. That leaves us matters of uh, uh, second public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak from the member, if it was a member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas will call on you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on something that was not on tonight's agenda? This is a second chance for public comment, open public comment. Mr. Lucas, first call? Second call? Final call? If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, type into the chat or raise hand in Zoom. Anybody, Mr. Lucas?
No.
Thank you. We go now to matters of uh council schedule. What do we have coming ahead, Mr. Lucas?
The budget. The departmental budget hearings will kick off uh Monday of next week at 6:00 PM. Uh, they will go through Thursday. Uh, all four nights will be uh, starting at 6:00 PM, will be here on Zoom. Uh, there's a different meeting link for each night. And uh, for any members of the public that want to attend, um, you can find those links. They're posted on the council website and uh um, the departments that will be presenting each night are also listed there uh on our website and on the uh, uh, the notice and agenda that's been posted. So um, budget book should be released um by the end of the week. Um, I know the administration's working hard to, to get those put together. So uh, council members should have the weekend to, to review those.
Mr. Lucas, can you tell us who's chairing the committee to hold each night next week?
If you give me a moment, I can.
I, I will. Other than that, uh, we have no business, uh, uh, no first reading, so uh, there is no committee night uh on August 26th. Our next regular session will be September 2nd.
So uh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith is chairing the Monday meeting, followed by uh Tuesday is Councilmember Rollo. Wednesday is Councilmember Rosenbarger and Thursday is Councilmember Sandberg.
Very good. Okay, you've been forewarned. Uh, final question is, are there any upcoming committee meetings that anybody wants to announce? Any constituent meetings that they like? Councilmember Sand, Scamblerie.
And just confirming that there will be no meeting the evening of Wednesday, the 26th. Is that what you said?
There is no, nothing to refer to uh committee. There, there's uh no committee scheduled.
Yeah, if, if the council would like to cancel that meeting, now might be a good opportunity to, to make a motion in that regard if it knows it doesn't.
Is there a meeting scheduled?
That's, yes, that's a, a regular.
We publicly noticed it for that, so.
Okay, then we need a motion to cancel the meeting.
I would like, so moved, I would like to move that we cancel the committee meetings planned for Wednesday, August 26th.
Second. Second? I'm not going to bother at a roll call, but if this all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it, we will have no meetings on the 26th. Okay. Any other uh meetings to announce before we adjourn? Without, then uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for your patience. Good night.
Good night.